This is the time that was noticed and posted for our work session. It's Tuesday, August the 27th, 2024. It's 2:00 PM. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, Disney. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Roll call, District 1, Paul Spears here. District 2 Supervisor English is present. District 3 Supervisor Judd is here. We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 447-576-330. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions at work sessions, for our record, need to be made when, before a person begins to speak. So before you speak, give us your name and what your job title is. So the discussion today is going to be about the status of the Miracle Valley Bible College. And do you have anything you want to add before I call on Dan?
I'll do that.
Okay. Then Dan Coxworth from Development Services Director, if you would, give us the information that you've compiled for us to see today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Dan Coxworth, I'm Director of Development Services. And I do hope this is our last work session concerning the Miracle Valley Bible College. We've had quite a few, but I will somewhat start from the beginning to, for the, for the public's sake, to an overview of what's happened to date. And I'll start with the basic overview of the property. It is 37 and a half acres. It's zoned RU4, and legal access to the property is from Bethlehem Way, which does have an act from Highway 92. So the area outlined in red is the 37 acres that will be available for auction later this summer. To go over the history of what we've done to date, we were deeded, the, the, the property was deeded to the state in March of 2022. Seven years prior to this, at any time, someone could have picked up the tax certificate from the treasurer and foreclosed on the property and taken ownership of the property, but that did not happen. Therefore, all of the taxes have been wiped clean and any lien of the property have been wiped, were wiped clean prior to it being deeded to the state in the care of the Board of Supervisors. After we took ownership of the property, we did perform an environmental assessment for hazardous materials. Because of the date the buildings were constructed in the 50s, we didn't expect to find lead-based paint and asbestos. In 2022, we also removed trash and debris from illegal dumping on the south end of the property. I have a slide in Ariel, I'll show you where we did that. In 2023, based on the environmental assessment, we did a abatement of the asbestos in the dome. We had a work session that year and the board decided to, or directed staff to stop work, any additional work on the property, and to put the property up for auction. As the board is aware, we did not receive payment from the bidders that did participate in that auction, so the county retained ownership of the property. In 2024, we continued with asbestos abatement of the remaining buildings. The board approved community enhancement funds to remove trash and 40,000 square foot concrete slab. With those funds, we also removed two fuel tanks and a hydraulic lift that was leaking oil. We coordinated those efforts with ADEQ. I also hired a third-party engineer to evaluate four structures, the four structures on the property, and to ask for his recommendations. The next three slides are basically those, the, you know, his observations and then the recommendations that he has. We don't need to go through each slide. Basically, the condition of these structures are, they're in very poor shape. And the recommendations were that it wouldn't be feasible to rehabilitate these buildings. And his suggestion was, his recommendation is to remove these buildings. That included the laundry building, both boys' and girls' dorm. And then the language for the main auditorium building or the tabernacle was not as bad a shape as the other structures, but because of the extensive damage, he felt like it would be extremely challenging to, to redevelop this, to redevelop the property, or at least redevelop this building. The third-party report will also be made available during the auction, so people are aware of what they're getting themselves into and the condition of these structures. This slide shows the location of the fuel tanks that we removed in the south side of the property, also the trash and debris that was illegally dumped there by the previous owners. That trash and debris was from the building that sat on the concrete slab. You could see in the aerial that we also removed. And then just some additional drone imagery of the current condition of the buildings. This is the boys' dorm. The roof had to be removed because it was fire damaged and saved for the contractors doing the asbestos abatement. So this building is currently open and exposed. Not that much trash is there, but there is still some trash around the building that I would like to have removed prior to auction if we have time. Girls' dorm is to the left side of the screen, next to the girls' dorm. I showed a picture of apartments. We never had a recommendation to remove the structure, but that there is additional trash located around this building that I would like to have removed prior to auction. The new owner of the property will be responsible for further cleanup of the trash and debris on the property after the auction. They will also be responsible for removing or securing any open and exposed structures. County staff will work with the new property owner of the college, coordinating with them to see what plans they have for the property. After a certain amount of time, we will treat this like any other code enforcement action for private property we have in the county. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
We, we put this out for auction, and we had people who did, but wouldn't, didn't come through with the money. So let's look at how we put this out for auction now so that only serious people that actually have money, if they choose to use it this way, will be buying. Can we put like, you have to put X number of dollars up in order to be a bidder? What about a low, a, a number that says, you know, don't bid below this because this is the bottom line? We didn't do that last time. I don't know that it's going to make any difference, but our goal is to get this back into the public hands. And originally, my goal, and I thought that was of the board, is that we really didn't want to sell something or get rid of something that had such hazardous materials on it that it would make us liable. Liability is something that we try to shy away from here at the county. Anytime that we're looking at policies or procedures or anything, we don't want to be liable. And so how soon can we put this back on the, on the process or in the process of putting it out for bid?
Madam Chair, Laura Lowenstein, Clerk of the Board. Last year, as you know, we only put a $50 deposit on all the, bid deposit on all of the tax deed land sale properties. So we, I've spoken with the auction company and the local realtor, and they've given me some suggestions. They suggest, the auction company suggests a higher bid deposit and possibly making that a wire transfer. And then a local realtor inputted as at least a 1%. Earnest money is typical to be put down on a property. So charging 1% of maybe the minimum bid and receiving that as a wired, a wire transfer. Also, we could possibly require a letter showing proof of funds, at least at the minimum, the minimum bid.
What do my colleagues think of low or no reserve?
What does that mean?
What means? No minimum bid or a low minimum bid?
No.
Didn't know what our minimum bid was last time.
250, and it was fed it up to over 700,000, over 700,000.
Well, that sounds low for that property, 250,000. And that's, that's a pretty large property. And, and if I have some input, I don't think we should spend another minute working on it. I think we've done lots and lots and lots of work. And if someone were to come and say, you left this property really dangerous, well, that's on them. They're the purchaser. They, they need to recognize that, and they will. There'll be paperwork and all kinds of things.
You say it's not as dangerous as it was?
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I was going to go in there too. Good, Ann. Good on you, that's a good one. So, but I really think that it's just time. Sometimes it's just time. Like cutting the apron strings or something, let it go, let it go.
I also want to expedite, as I said, when we came to the, the conclusion of this matter last fall, or whatever it is, my, my desire is to expedite. So if my colleagues do not want a no, a zero minimum bid, then what minimum bid are they thinking of?
You know, the reason I said, I, I said no to that was the fact that we could be putting this in the hands of someone who didn't have the money, and we'd be, our planning and zoning department would be out there all the time trying to get this thing cleaned up. Because it can't be left in this condition, even though we're not committing to clean it up right now. And we're saying, okay, whoever buys it, but they do have to clean it up. We can't leave this hazard there. We wouldn't anywhere else. So that's what I'm afraid of, is that if somebody comes in and says, well, I'll give you $3,000 for it, and nobody else bids, but do they have the money to clean it up? Or are we just going to be starting this process all over again?
Well, as Mr. Coxworth indicated a few minutes ago, it would fall under whatever the current regulations are for private property in that case. So if you want, if you are not amenable to a zero minimum bid, what minimum bid are you amenable to?
I worked with Laura with the auction and provide my recommendation for minimum bids for all properties. Typically, we go with 50, 50% of full cash value. In this case, we went much below that and have a tentative minimum bid of $150,000.
$150,000.
50, so your 1% would be a 1,500 deposit of earnest money that would not be returned if they were the successful bidder and decided not to perform and pay them.
Okay, and we'll, we'll consider that. We got a number of 150,000 for a minimum bid that, that we're considering. How about a deposit to bid? You said 1% of 150,000, a 1,500. It is 1,500. What about a higher deposit to bid, or whatever we're calling it? Earnest money?
Earnest money.
Okay.
I, I, I guess what I'm looking for is people that aren't just kind of pulling our strings here. You know, you've actually got the money to pay for it and to clean it up. And so I don't know the 1,500 to do that. There are lots of people writing a check for 1,500 that only have 2,000 in their bank account. And, and that's still not what we're looking for.
Okay, so if you want a higher amount of earnest money, what higher amount of earnest money would you recommend?
50,000?
Okay, we have a 50,000.
Probably worth 150,000. If you're not willing to put up 50,000 to bid on it?
I'm listening. Okay, so besides, besides these amounts, there's also what I consider and, and mentioned earlier, the white elephant factor, which is pretty much what you're talking about. If, if somebody, if, if somebody was to get it for free and it would cost, how much to clean it up? What are the estimates that you had to clean it up to make it level? There's nothing but dirt, no concrete, no nothing.
I only have estimates for the four buildings we talked about.
Okay, demolish four buildings?
Four buildings. Some of that was not removing everything from the site bearing on site of $95,000, which has probably since gone up. But you're like, so you're looking at 95 to 100,000, just through the,
To demolish four buildings?
Four buildings.
Okay, which buildings can stay? I think you mentioned apartments can stay.
I would say everything, all the, all the other buildings are salvageable and in decent shape, except for,
Could we go back to the, the slide that was the, the main overhead and had generally names for all the buildings? Or as I saw it seen, and talk about which ones, which ones are we talking about getting demolished? And which ones are we not talking about getting demolished? Maybe you can,
Circles are the one that,
Yeah, removal, removal of the tabernacle. Although the apartments are circled, I think this is from one of our first work sessions. And these took, boys', girls' dorm, boys' dorm, tabernacle, laundry building. The, the remaining buildings are in decent shape. They are deteriorating. That's when I think there is an urgency to try to get this into private property hands.
Okay.
This is probably the best building because it was lived in by the previous owner. But the windows are getting broken, doors are getting kicked down.
Okay, so for, for everybody that's here that's looking at the thing, what, what, what is contemplated as, as getting demolished is all the buildings that are circled, except for the one that's on the middle with the right, which is called apartments. And that, that would be, if, if we were saying everything circled is going to get demolished, then that would be incorrect. And we, we don't contemplate demolishing the apartments.
Incorrect, we're obviously not contemplating anything.
Yeah.
I understand.
And we would require that these buildings be secured.
Okay, but not necessarily,
Not necessarily demolished, they could be boarded up. It's a little difficult with the boys' dorm because there's no roof on it. It's probably just easier to take the building down. But the other ones could be boarded up.
So really, the circles mean secure. They, they don't mean demolished right this second anyway. So let me, let me go on. I don't see and I don't hear from you any plan for further demolition of anything until after the auction, if the auction fails. Is that correct?
Correct. The caveat I have is if the board wish that I continue to clean up trash and debris on the property, I do have the funds to do that. I'm not sure what the date is set, if the date has been set yet for the auction.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to reiterate. I don't see any plan for further demolition of anything prior to auction, and, and the exception being cleanup, which is what you just said.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just trying to make that clear for everybody in here. Let's see, so we're, we're not willing to go zero or no minimum bid. And, and we're talking somewhere between 1,500 and 15,000 earnest money. Or I should say 1,500 to 50,000 earnest money at the moment. Anybody want to discuss those figures anymore? So, so the minimum bid we're looking at is 150,000. That's what we're talking about right now. And we're talking about earnest money of between 1,500 and 50,000.
If I can, I, I do like the 50,000 minimum bid. I do believe this property will sell for at least 100,000. And with that 50,000 minimum bid, which is refundable if you're not the winning bidder.
Okay, we're calling that earnest money. Earnest 50,000 earnest money.
To participate.
And, and the minimum bid, 150,000. Are these the figures that we've talked about so far? And so 1,500 is not on the table anymore. 1,500 is not on the table.
Or not on the table.
I understand.
And if you would like to,
Zero minimum bid.
If you'd like to require a letter of proof of fund, too.
Is that, procedurally, I'm not sure how that works, so.
Usually, the realtor was explaining to me when they submit their earnest money and they spin an offer, they would also include a, a letter of proof of funds from their bank.
Or at least 150,000?
Right.
Okay, for the minimum bid.
Right.
Some of the notes that I took earlier today at the, at the, the earlier meeting is what we wanted to do was let the new owner, talking about a year ago, we wanted to let the new owners take responsibility last year. That was what we wanted, and it didn't happen.
They didn't come up with any money.
We get a new owner.
We couldn't let them have it.
But with any luck, we will get a new owner this time. And it sounds like it's fair, the, the amount. 50,000 still seems like a lot to me, but if you've got 150 to put into the property and you're hoping to get it within the 300,000 or whatever range, you're going to have 50,000 especially that will be returned.
That's what I'm saying is there's got to be,
If you don't win, you'll get the 50,000.
How are these people playing with us? Thinking that they're going to finally let, give it away?
Talking about the people in the room. Okay, this is, this is just the whole bidding process, it's a, it's a risk, you know, that, that we all take.
Potential bidders, how, how much time to inspect prior to bid?
Thank you for bringing that up. I'm considering at this time, days where people can reserve a time for staff to accompany them to view the property. It will be small groups. It will be required that people register, maybe an hour on the property, groups of 10, where my staff and I can keep track of them and answer any questions they have and can take them to the buildings. Sign a liability waiver.
Wear steel shoes.
They can take whatever they want, just kidding.
All the junk.
There's a lot still there. No, just so we can keep track, so people can see because pictures really don't do the justice of how poor a condition these buildings are.
So it could be safely said that no one will be denied a reasonable amount of time to inspect prior to bid? A reasonable amount of time, whatever.
I, I don't think we need to put reasonable. I think we need to put explicitly the amount of time because minimal to one person and another is different.
Okay.
So as many times as you've walked around there, what is a timeframe that people could see enough?
I believe an hour is enough.
Okay, then that's what we need to put on there. Because reasonable, well, I haven't seen, I haven't been over there yet. I haven't, you know, and we need staff to know what, how much time they're committing to.
How about two hours? Two hours?
I'm thinking if you have an hour and you're serious, and that hour didn't get you quite enough time, could you make another schedule? Could you schedule another?
We can work with.
Yeah, so you could take two hours if you wanted.
Yeah, we could schedule tours, if that's what you want to call them.
Call it two hours.
Every other hour, a day or two.
Sound good. That's a, that's a reasonable amount of time.
I think an hour is long enough, but if they want to come back and do it again.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Judd and I, we're not taking a vote.
We just talked.
Well, it's, it's, they have staff that's going to have to be out there.
Yeah.
And so that's why I'm saying is, you know, you, we're not denying people to be there, but neither is this, you know, vacation time.
Dan stands seeing the glimmer of light at the end. He doesn't mind two hours.
Actually, I don't see the end of light at the end of the property.
And then they can be registered to go another time, that's right.
But we would like for people to see the property, even if they're not interested in bidding, just because of the intention that this property has had in the last couple of years.
Mr. Cox, would you mind just one more time, take your little laser pointer and, point to the buildings which can remain in use now?
Remain in use now?
Now.
Meaning if somebody buys it, it's move-in ready, is that?
None.
None, but,
Good, how about, how about?
Safe.
This building is where the previous owner has chapel. It's in pretty good shape, actually. It hasn't been vandalized or, I think most of the windows are in, in, in place. This was the home. Also, it was a, used as a home for the elderly, I believe, from two owners ago. Is in decent shape. The rest of these are going to require extensive remodels. This one is borderline, the apartments borderline for sure. And boys' dorm, girls' dorm need to be safe and secure, as well as the tabernacle building. I'm not as much worried about the laundry building because it's pretty small, but it is currently being used as a hiding place for activity coming across the border. So we'll, we'll work with the new owner on what their plans are for the property and, and try to assist them as best we can. Again, our staff's whole approach to this is we'd like the new owner to be successful and not for this property to continue and infill up at a rate of state.
And thank you for that. And I do believe that you're absolutely sincere that you want the owner of it to be successful, and I do, why?
I, I have a question. If the, the people who purchase this are a church and it won't be taxed, what, what do we have in our tool chest that would help us to get that cleaned up, even if they are not taxed? And because they're not taxed, then there's no, no money coming in for school districts or anything. But this property is still going to be in that condition?
If the property continues to be in its current condition, there's no movement, then we will send them a code enforcement letter, and they will have an opportunity to go before the hearing officer or at least continue to, or start working with staff for permitting. Typically, a process if we receive no action as a result of that hearing officer, then we would go to court. We would get a court order, and then we would,
So it wouldn't matter if it was a private individual or if it were a church?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
And then after the court order, we would clean up the property and then lean the property. Which is not what we want to do.
No, I know that.
More financial distress on this property, but it needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, we were, we've been discussing, we've talked about the possible direction, and I think that the agreement that you hear from all of us is that we'd like to have this back on the, back on the tax rolls or back in private hands as quickly as possible. And you've been looking at criteria for the sale that's different, you know, from the normal process that we do, the, the tax deed sale. So would it be too soon to say in a, a week, 10 days, two weeks, that you come back to us with the information that we need in order to start this fall rolling so that we can then put it on the agenda and get started?
Do I need to advertise it for two weeks prior to the sale?
Yeah, if the board's comfortable, I think we can decide that 50,000 earnest money is adequate. And if the board's comfortable, that 150,000, then we'll bid. And then we can, or we can just schedule the auction and we can get going on this as soon as we can, along with all the other properties that are available for auction.
Well, I, I'm just saying, I, I want us to move forward as quickly as possible on this. And I'm not sure how much direction we can give you without, without pushing our authority here.
Yeah, I, if I, if I may, Christine Roberts, you've given, you've had the discussion, there's been some general discussion about the direction we're going to. I think Mr. Coxworth has enough information now to know which direction to move to, what the board is meaning to. You do not have to do a formal vote on a board agenda item. a formal vote on a board agenda item on this. You've never had to do vote on a board agenda.
No, because what is we need from May one, so. All right, is there anything else that needs to be brought up about this property at this time?
I think all all my questions have been answered. Appreciate it.
Any more information you want to give us?
I don't think I have anything. I think I have enough to go there.
Okay. Ms. Judd?
No, I'm I'm fine.
Okay, well.
It's just time to do it.
Then before we um get out of this meeting, I want to say that our next meeting will be of right now for a work session on regarding the recommendations for Timmy Maddie's Million Pet Challenge pro bono feasibility study. So thank you all.